My apologies, this is our first time with the hybrid system. So if things are not working perfectly or understand the first time. Can you hear me back?
No, it's not very easy to hear.
Somebody turn off the AC. Oh, no.
Can you turn up the mic, please?
We've got that control.
Mr. Mayor, have you taken the mic? Is it better?
These mics are not part of the new system. This is the old system. So.
The circle is your.
Okay. And these are on the show. Can you hear me now? Worked reasonably well as a test case. For the reason I asked you to stay standing, I wanted us to take as a community, take a moment to reflect on the tragedy that the community experienced this past week. And just each of us take a moment of quiet reflection on this tragedy, the loss of two young lives. And we'll talk more about the event and what it means to our public policy. But for the moment, just join me in a moment of quiet reflection for that family. All right, thank you. We'll do our best. All right, the meeting will come to order with apologies for our fledgling electronic adventure here in hybrid meeting holding, and we'll do the best that we can. I know the presence of the forum, our colleague Ed Hayes traveling today. He is not with us, but we have four trustees and tenants, and so we have a forum. We shall come to order, and I would ask for a review and approval of the minutes of July 12, July 18, July 25th. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
John Bredel, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the minutes are agreed to. Thank you. I will start with the mayor's report, if I may. And I do want to start with the tragedy that occurred very recently. It was responded to by our very capable fire department, by our very capable ambulance department, by our very capable police department, and joined in with other jurisdictions, other units to treat this sudden terrible fire. In thinking about what we know and what we learned is that we are going to be here in the next couple of weeks, process of learning as much as we can from professionals who are involved, and examining in our codes, in our practices, any lessons that were learned during this tragedy, any improvements to our building codes, to our safety codes. And fortunately, we have as a trustee, a former fire chief, who is also deputy mayor, also one of the leading members of the ambulance corps. And we will devote ourselves to looking at this incident as a moment that we can perhaps do better in terms of our management of these sectors in our community.
What exactly happened? I'm not up on this.
There was a fire in Noiah, just at the end, Spring Street, in the middle of the night over the weekend, and two young lives were lost. It was rental property, so it reminds us, we are just in the starting phases of putting in our rental registry and look at that in terms of whether safety elements are appropriate to that process as well. All of that work and review will go forward in the weeks and the weeks ahead. Second, I want to mention to you, received this week of a long letter describing itself as a community letter that addressed the recent introduction of a possible affordable housing project on the west side of town. That review of that letter has been completed. I answered it today. I will just summarize for you that the matters raised in that letter are almost entirely matters we are already performing and practices that we are already engaged in. And to the extent there is more to it, we are certainly being responsive. And so that letter is out, and that dialogue will continue. The other matter I just want to mention in passing, because I've been asked about it many times this week. It was reported in the paper this week that the Sag Harbor Yacht Club will be permitted to demolish an officially historic but shabby house it owns at 42 Bay Street. That did not happen. I think there was a misunderstanding in the reporting. It was discussed in the A R B, and it's been discussed there along the way, and I think it will continue to be. But that matter is still not formally adopted, so no permissions were granted on that subject to our knowledge. Number three. I will just give the mayor's report to my departments, and then we'll go into the regular reports. The Public Works Department has been extremely busy these several weeks. Report, the National Grid Project, and we all enjoy it so much over the last several months, is finally fully complete on Main Street. I know we're going to miss those trucks and personnel, but the job is done, and that means we will all have better access to street desks. All the work on the shoulder this time of year, the shoulders of the village are being cleaned up. Light tree trimming was conducted on particularly the major streets. Patching the roads continues. There's still painting of stop lines and other ground signals. The street sweeper is out most days. There was a new drainage catch basin installed on Franklin Avenue to treat that area, and we've added some asphalt, paving on Eastville Avenue and on Spring Street. I'm happy to report that the New York State DOT came around this week and painted under the Harder Bridge. That's the second time in a year that they've done it. We did have some minor graffiti that had appeared, nothing compared to what we had had a year or two ago. And there's been police attention to that and surveillance, and that has made a difference. And so the bridge is, has been freshened up, and thank you to New York State DOT for responding as quickly as they did to us. The dock report for the month, the numbers continue to be very, very high. Our waiting lists for slips are long. It kills us to have to turn away paying customers, but we do. And right now, we're running on the season $238,700 ahead of last year. So this part of our environment, this part of our economy continues to be vital, part of the character of our community, but also part of the economy of the community. And the Harbor Master with a very good team that he put up and put together this summer has earned for the village for the fourth year in a row, the Elite Marina Award that is given for marinas that get the job done as well as Bob Worey and his team. We have some terrific deputy harbor masters and some young people that are just aces. They're courteous and interested and water-oriented, terrific kids. We're getting to the part of the season where we start to lose them back to school. So a little strain on the system, but we've had a very, very good summer with a very, very good team. Reservations were strong all summer, particularly during the last month. And as they say, it's hard to turn down requests, but we find ourselves having to do that. We will be looking at, we've already done some preliminary work on the most needed part of our waterfront in terms of our marine business, and that is the transient docks. They suffered serious damage this winter. The repairs have held up. They're fully engaged. And in the design that we're working with professionals on, we're going to try to reconfigure the design so as to be able to increase the volume of slips that we could put in that same footprint. And that's the dock you see to the west of the long. During the last month, there were 26 marine patrols who joined with Southampton Town, East Hampton Town, Shelter Island, U.S. Coast Guard and Staten Harbor to manage the fireworks. And our thanks to the yacht club for a terrific fireworks production this year, brought us back from these off years and with perfect safety and without incident on the water, thanks to all the marine talent that was out there. July, the department conducted 13 surprise marine sanitary device inspections in the harbor. And of the 13, all 13 passed inspection with flying colors. So compliance level has been good. It's something that always bears watching, but we have not found now in two seasons any serious violations of the water quality controls for visiting vessels. I will say this, we have a couple of, our protest in the village is performed for us by Southampton Town. And the people that had assigned to us this season last are terrific. The volume they're dealing with is very high, and they're doing a very good job, and we thank them for that. And impacted tonight, there is a community award presented. I'll tell you that the building department is running ahead of last year as well. The new rate structure has, to this point in the year, we are running $257,000 ahead of a year ago in terms of revenues from the building application and inspection process. So there is some upside to all this development pressure, at least in terms of us being able to get the job done. I got asked just the other day if there was any signs of what we've seen slowing. If you've seen them, tell me. I have not yet seen those signs. There was a little fall off with the weather, a couple of rainstorms, but the volume of building activity remains very, very high. The code enforcement department is obviously very busy. And we added a combination fire marshal and code enforcement officer with our existing code enforcement officer. Routine inspections are at a normal rate. And I would say that the number of complaints taken is about consistent with previous years. And every one of the complaints was, very often it's a neighbor or someone who spots something. Every one of them has been addressed and reported. That includes the departments. The justice court has in fact full operation. The number of cases is at a summer high, and the revenues from the court operation are back where they were before COVID. So to the extent they, court operations normal, it's back to normal. A lot of people in the back. I thank you for that, and turned out to the public safety report. And I want to tell you, because I don't think he would tell you this, but the first respondent to this tragedy this week was the deputy mayor. And had intimate involvement in the entire matter of managing this. Fire, former fire chief, current ambulance, still a fireman and ambulance team member, joined initially upon arrival by the police chief who attended to two victims. I just want to say publicly, we have the finest people in these positions, and they prove it once again. So Tom, I just want to say to you that thank you for everything, particularly managing this event this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You want to do the translation for it?
I was going to do it at the end of these.
So let me start with the police force, Mayor. Thank you again. I'll start with the police force report. For a second, I'll introduce police. Petty Losney, two open container summonses, one criminal contempt, one warrant, one criminal mischief, one criminal possession of a controlled substance. We had 37 motor vehicle accidents, 16 arrests, one D W I, and 68 uniform traffic tickets for issue. That was for the police in the month of July, and I wanted to thank Chief McGuire and his officers for doing the best and the most outstanding job that they can. Seems like at some point, we're almost overwhelmed in this village, and the police tend to do an excellent job. So thank you, Chief. Now moving to the fire department report for the month of July. The fire department volunteered for over 1,172 man hours during the month. The officers and members of the department responded to 75 calls for service. These calls included four brush fires, five motor vehicle accidents, and three mutual aids to East Hampton and Montauk. There was a couple of brush fires out in Montauk that we assisted with. And the month of July, Sag Harbor was the host to many events that the fire department helped contribute to, either by standing by on land or in the water for the Fourth of July fireworks that the mayor was speaking about for the yacht club. We also provided a tent, assembled a tent for Jordan's run. His annual run that took place again after COVID, being away from COVID. We'd also like to thank everyone that came out and showed their support. This week's carnival was a big success for the department, so thank you to everybody that supported it. Now moving on to the ambulance corps. The ambulance corps for the month of July had 128 emergency calls in the month of July. Four nights, two meetings, two training sessions, one parade, and two standbys for a total of 1,391 man hours. So as you can see, we went from July of 2021, we had 101 emergency calls to 128 in July. So the numbers continue to rise. I just wanted to add to the about a little structure fire that we had, that the fire took place in Southampton Town's jurisdiction. So their fire marshals, their fire investigators, their building departments is the lead agency investigating what happened, exactly happened in that fire. As a community, I, we should acknowledge the effort that the firefighters, as you have, and the ambulance corps members made that night to try to save the two young girls that were trapped, Jillian and Lindsay Weiner, age 21 and 19, trapped on the second floor. All firefighters put themselves at great harm and risk to get through a very dangerous and deadly situation to at least get them out of the house, give us a chance to work on. Unfortunately, they didn't survive. Parents and the brother Zach survived. They had injuries, and they were transported to the hospital. Just want to mention how against the ambulance corps, Bridgehampton Ambulance Corps, Southampton Village Ambulance who came and assisted us. Southampton Town, East Hampton Town, and Bridgehampton Fire Departments came and assisted us also. So I just wanted to say thank you to those agencies, and that there's a reason why the building inspector and the fire marshal check and make sure things are off the code. And this is a perfect reason why. We want to make sure that the fire alarms are working, that it was a means of regress. It all comes full circle. And we'll just say that we, please, make sure your fire alarms are working, that they are proper alarms, and that you have a plan in case of a fire, how to get out of the building. And that will conclude my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. I neglected to mention one more name in my report, and that is Chief O'Brien. When Kevin was barely arrived, I believe that at the time that Tom and AJ were addressing the two young victims, then Kevin entered the building and breaked his tombstone.
What happened? Well, he entered originally without a hose line and tried to search for the victims and became trapped in a room. But because he remembered his training, he remembered that when he did a search, there was a window. So he went back and redid his search, got to that window, and was able to jump out of the window. Otherwise, he would have been shot up. He also, I also want to mention, we'll see fire department, I forgot to mention, they also showed up.
Kevin is a young fellow. He serves as our fire chief. He is now a police officer in Southampton, and he's from a family that's been in public service to this village now for generations. And Kevin's not here tonight because he's working, unless he's hiding in the back. So.
He's sent him a message.
Okay. So when you see Kevin around town, be sure to give him a pat back as well. Next up, I will call on trustee Corish for the report on bill trance and sewer guard.
Thank you, Mayor, and a special thanks to deputy mayor and everybody who volunteers to this village, without whom our lives here would just not be possible. And so moving on to sewage treatment. For the month of July, year 2022, the total gallons received were 3.187 million. We removed 61,000 gallons of sludge. D M R reports are forwarded, as always, every month on the 8/16. Suffolk County Health Inspection, the next inspection is due 17th of October. New York State D E C inspection day is open, and we had no complaints in the month. Summary of operations, wastewater treatment plan running well. We're now operating on four basins. We have five basins in total, each one is capable of handling 30,000 gallons a day. Four is the maximum we usually get to at this time of the summer, because we're pretty much at our maximum use. We had a company, Bio Cryad, out to install an odor scrubber. This is something new. We have one tank that tends to be the source of odors. I won't give details because we're really not appropriate. It was a meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions. But it's a cover that goes on the tank, and there's an odor scrubber. So we hope that for this, from time to time, we do get some of the stains of the odor from the tank, from the plant during certain operations, and we hope that this will help to mitigate it. So that's been installed. We had Suffolk County Health Department out. They inspected. Everything was good. So we will see how that works out. And the flow increase from June to July was 1.213 million gallons, and that was the increase in month. And over to grants, in a busy couple of weeks, we had a number of deadlines we had to make. The first set was Thursday, 28th of July. We submitted three grant applications to New York State Consolidated Funding Application. Two of them were for the proposed expansion of the sewer district to two areas, Area K and L. Anybody who's been at these meetings will have heard me talk about this over the last few months. Area K is on the west side of the village, and it's that Road Street, Meadow Street, all the way out towards Howard Street, a very low-lying area that tends to have a very high water table. So septic systems are not performing well there, and Area L is rising to be there in that part of the village. So we submitted these applications. We're still, to support those applications, we have sister applications that go to, and I see welcome, Councilman Escobones here, that go to the town of Southampton for Area K, town of East Hampton for Area L. And the idea is that for New York State grants, we need to elaborate a local contribution, and it's a three-to-one ratio. So for every dollar we raise, the village or locally, we can get $3 to New York State, so we can accelerate these programs. We have, we've yet to be confirmed from Southampton, but we had a great meeting with their water quality committee a number of weeks ago, so we're very hopeful there. Unfortunately, Southampton news is not so good. We did put in our application. They felt that we should get funding from other sources first and then come back to them for C P F money. We feel that's sort of putting the cart before the horse, spinning around whichever way you want to describe it. The idea of C P F, in my mind, and also Fred Field confirmed, was that if we can get a local match, we can use that money to leverage state money. Without which, it's very hard to get state money. We were asked, and I do know that the Water Quality Committee in East Hampton recommended the project, and for some reason, the board declined to approve it, and we were asked to reapply. And we had 72 hours to the deadline to do it, so scramble. I'd like to give a shout out to Jen Messiano or Grant Rider and John Parker, who's worked with me on this, and who probably worked really hard over the weekend to get this in 20 minutes before the deadline. So we're hopeful that we'll get an approval. We've already submitted applications to New York State, but without the local source of funding, I'm not sure how successful that they are going to be. So there's, we'll just have to wait and see. Maybe I'll have better news at September meeting. And finally, Havens, we did get submitted grant for Havens Beach to do, I spoke about this before, so that grant went back in. It was declined last year by New York State. We met with them. We found out the reasons where we came up short. We sort of redid the application that went back in, and that will allow us to study the entire watershed area of Havens Beach, which would be the first step in trying to devise a plan to mitigate the pollution that happens from time to time, especially after heavy rainfall. Okay.
Thank you, Aiden. Bob Plumb is here for the little housing. Going from South Hampton to Town.
I didn't think anybody would be interested in talking about a formal house.
Please speak up.
Anyway, I didn't think anyone would be interested in a formal house, joke. Anyway, we don't have any formal applications in. I know that there's an architect working on one A D U because we're dwelling in a new village. I'm not sure if that's going to apply for you yet. There's been one application.
Stand up.
Down to front of the podiums.
Hey, we'll have to do this without my notes. There is one A D U application being prepared. That's an auxiliary dwelling unit in the village. Tony Vermond, who is the architect, is preparing it. It hasn't been submitted yet. Other than that, there have been no other formal applications of any kind. Anything else that's been proposed or talked about is in the earliest stages, meaning there has been no secret as to know anything, just nascent, just to get. And so really, that's pretty much it, and we'll have to see where these things take us. East Hampton Town has not had good luck with A D Us because they had, they had that rule for a year. And they even, they allow it on three half an acre, and they have gotten no applications to build an auxiliary dwelling unit. And there are two reasons. One, that the. And there are two reasons. One, the rent is locked in, and therefore it's not economic and feasible or practical. And secondly, there's lottery process just for your tenth. And these are, it, it depends on how it's funded and this and that, but it's, it's something to remember with all of these things. But anyway, so I don't have much to say other than, um, it's, it's, they're all still in the works. And if anybody has a question, that would be great. Otherwise, that's really all I have. Matt, we're going to hold the questions till the final.
So Bob, I can just mention lottery, I think is a very important part of this. It's a feeling among the merchants in the village that they will simply be able to place workers in, in, in building a project, which is not in fact true. In all cases, are you saying in all cases?
I'm not going to say that I know, because these projects are all financed differently. They're state, they're federal. But typically, because of the Fair Act, Housing Act of two thousand eight, if a project is governmentally subsidized, you have to, you can't exclude anybody. And by definition, you then also can't favor anyone. So I don't know the ins and outs of how these each individually work. But all the others that Southampton has done and East Hampton has done have had wait lists and lotteries to get into. And I'm not saying anything else here would necessarily, but it is definitely something to, um, to, to keep an eye on. And I think we have to, you have to do it project by project, is my understanding.
And do you know, or do you know the present stage, the pool from which the lottery is?
Honestly, I don't know. I, I'm actually, um. Liz, you know, how, how, how is the lottery pool established?
It depends. We're, we're working on, um, developing an intermunicipal agreement with the towns and the different townships to hopefully administer an affordable housing program, and that will dictate how these processes are, are governed. But that hasn't happened yet.
So the recipients will come from the town, after?
Not necessarily, but if we can get, if we could do that, yes. But that's not necessarily.
I think it's really premature to engage in this discussion at this point, only because we haven't got there yet. But of course, that information will be forthcoming. Yeah.
It is something to think about. You are?
Hi, Sarah House Preservation, Long Island. Would, uh, affordable housing project be willing to sacrifice designated landmark properties in the historic district?
That, that would not be up to me. Um, if, if there are historic buildings anticipated to be torn down, for instance, that would go to our boards, uh, planning.
Would you de-designate those buildings and go through the process of de-designation?
That's not, that's not before the board at this time. Yeah. It's, it's really hypothetical to ask a question like that.
Just recently heard a, a proposal that will, on, on Grove Street, that would entail the demolition of three designated landmark properties.
Landmarks or?
Four landmarks. Well, four in the sense that one is eligible, but the village has not updated its history since nineteen ninety-four. So we, we are wholly and wholly, you know, historic preservation of affordable housing abandoned town. It's a, it's a really, you know, unfortunate that the state people continue to associate historic preservation with gentrification. But there are many, many, many excellent projects in New York City and across the country that combine the two. However, I don't think, you know, definitely preservation of Long Island, that's the regional advocate for historic preservation since nineteen forty-eight. We would not want to see a project that would demolish designated landmarks of the village to make way for, for something. So, um, it is definitely, you know, a big question. You know, we were very concerned and alarmed that the board would, would hear a proposal that is entirely demolition of landmarks.
If I may, a three-minute rule, we have to devote here tonight, thank you. You are asking questions that are completely appropriate for the boards when this application is taken up. The application by a private owner is the first to come through under our new initiative. It will be heard in one form or another by five boards. And every question that anyone's mentioned, pick, just come on in from anywhere else, is apt to those boards. Include, just, just bear with me, please, Sarah.
You know, I, I.
Excuse me, just let me finish. Sarah, if you would, please let me be there. These questions will be addressed in all of those boards. The exact posture of this right now is this outfit that we refer to as Conifer Realty LLC made, brought forward an application which has not been accepted for, uh, brought in formally because it's incomplete. It was the subject of a review by the environmental consultants. There are five pages of objections or matters that have been raised that will have to be addressed before we even consider this application.
Yes.
But what you can do, what you cannot do is jump to a conclusion that any of this, of these possibilities are assured to happen, because the question has not been put in any of the processes of this government. So I hear you, uh, the, uh, concerned about historic preservation.
We appreciate that. It was just alarming to see it before this board recently.
But I'm not ready for this board.
The proposal was floated, so the fact that there's three, there's three designated landmark properties.
Now, I got that. But here's the thing. What you saw here was an informal preview of an application a private entity was preparing to make.
I, I.
That's what it was. So I can't debate with you tonight, features of that application or outcomes. We don't know. What we set up after a year of very varied film art is a platform for considering every one of these matters in trying to bring about a forty thousand. We're working with some terrific people, uh, Michael Daley, Greeney, and others are all part of this effort. And every one of these questions will be addressed in the formal processes if they ever complete the application. Right now, it's not a complete application, so this is the most we can talk about right now.
It's going to try to make the three minutes, I promise. Yes.
Yeah, we need to get some.
And we are going to have, we're going to have to say.
Uh, my name is Catherine Levy. I live on Madison Street. I've lived in Sag Harbor for thirty years. I don't think in those entire thirty years, and we've had conflicts in this village, I've ever seen the bitterness and division that I've seen in the last year and a half since the Bay Street Theater proposal was first put forward. And the two proposals that I'm going to make to the trustees now, I hope will ameliorate the situation. As the mayor said, some of us, April Bornix, Susan Need, and Nazia R. Berus drafted an open letter asking for transparency both about the Bridge Street project and in future, if it's ever applied for the Bay Street project and if there's a three-tiered parking garage ever applied for that, that process. We just want transparency. I think it will make this whole situation much better. So here are the two proposals. I think that this meeting today makes it clear that we need a large public forum with more than three minutes each to speak about about these proposals. And I hope in that public forum, my dear friend Bryony will get to speak, and Michael Daley, and those of us who have problems with these proposals and worry about the whole scope of all three proposals. If you remember, we had such a meeting when Mayor Mulkey, he was the mayor, when the Bay Street Theater project was proposed. And I think it was a good moment for everybody to air what they felt, to ask some factual questions of the trustees. I remember when you were trustee, Mr. Mayor, you said some very important things at that meeting. And I think that this shows that we need such a meeting, and we need it as soon as possible. The other thing I would propose is about the application process. I think the trustees and the mayor made a very wise decision when they completed the waterfront overlay plan, to decide that elected officials should have the final review over anything over thirty-five hundred feet in the waterfront overlay here in place. And I would suggest that another reform is needed that I don't think is going to require a vote, which is a simple change in the application process. So that whenever an application is put in for anything over thirty-five hundred square feet in the waterfront overlay district, you post on social media, I know it's not your favorite thing, Mr. Mayor, but you post on social media, this application has been put into municipal hall. And then you allow people to see the application without foiling it. They can pay a fee for copying, but whatever it takes so that the community knows the application is there, they can review it, and that we can have a transparent, honest, trusting debate about it. I think that both of these things would really increase the trust that people have in the process and the village government. And I would just urge everybody to please, as we go along with this debate over a momentous change in our village, that we all remain civil and fair to one another. Thanks a lot.
Are there any other public comment? Paul has handed up a pen, Ryan. Paul, come here.
I can speak from here, I think. I think that it's really important for us to, that we have the meetings in a place where we can all hear. Many of us cannot actually hear what you're saying. I actually went online. At a place where we're not jammed in like sardines. Where we can treat each other as people and talk and take time and listen to each other. I don't understand some of the issues. And so that, what's being called for is a sensible discussion in the community for the future.
Hi, everyone. Bryony Frage, Montauk Avenue Extension. I, I know there's a lot of disagreements about affordable housing, but I have something really exciting and that I think everybody can get behind regarding affordable housing, which is a proposition for community housing. Some of this has been written about in the papers recently, but I just want to bring it to everyone's attention and make sure that you understand what's happening. So there's an exciting proposition for community housing that'll be on the ballot for voters this November. November eighth. Um, so you're going to flip your ballot and you're going to vote yes for community housing for the towns of East Hampton, Southampton, Shelter Island, and Southold, which of course includes Sag Harbor on election day this November. And here tonight is a member of the Vote Yes for Community Housing Committee, which was set up by local advocates, business owners, and community leaders with guidance from Assemblyman Fred Thiel, who was a co-sponsor of the legislation. Our goal is to advocate for the successful pass, passage of this exciting bipartisan amendment to town law that will provide an ongoing source of funds that each east and town can use to create accessible, affordable homes and apartments for local residents. Yeah, uh, the money will come from a half percent real estate transfer fee. It's a one-time cost paid for by the buyer of, at their real estate closing. It's like the sister bill to the CPF fund. First-time homebuyers will be exempt from this fee. It's important to note that your property taxes will not be impacted by this. The money can be used to buy land, to build and renovate houses and apartments for sale and for rent. Assist first-time homebuyers with loans of up to fifty percent of down payment. Supplement rent for families paying more than thirty percent of their income on rent. This could, you know, this could be a game changer for Sag Harbor. And passing this referendum, I just am urging everybody to vote yes in November. I know it's a ways away, but we have a lot of education to do right now to make sure that people understand what this is, because if they think it's a tax and that their property tax is going to go up, which it's not, you know, they may get voted down, and we could lose this incredible opportunity. So, um, our, I have flyers that detail what this proposition is all about, that I'll leave right here with everything else. We have a QR code because we're trying to raise money to print these flyers and hand them out and, and, you know, get the word out about this. But this is something I think everybody in this community can get behind and really should. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Comment on it, saying that I fully support the legislation and that it's, it's a piece of the puzzle to get working families a stake in the community. It's not just affordable housing, which will keep the rent down. Yes, they can afford to live and maybe they can save a little, but they're never going to be able to save enough to get to that next step. And this legislation creates a method for them to buy into the market.
Yes.
So it's.
Thank you. I, I see that our, uh, state council is here.
I do, thank you, Mayor.
Top John, Stigoni, uh, North Haven.
Uh, good evening, everyone, and, uh, thank you all for coming. Uh, Mayor, Board. Uh, I'm here today to echo a lot of what, what Bryony said about, uh, the Community Housing Fund. Trustee Gardella, you are absolutely right. This is one piece of the puzzle. I'm a councilman in the town of Southampton. We have passed this legislation. We have created the fund pending public approval in, in November. So we are here asking you all, please vote in November. Tell all of your friends. This is in Southampton as well as East Hampton, and I'm asking the board tonight if you would consider at your next meeting, uh, a memorializing resolution from the village of Sag Harbor supporting the passage of this resolution. It is essentially a statement from the board. I have sent, uh, I've sent a sample one, uh, to the clerk. Thank you. You'll see it in your inbox when, when you get there later on. So if you would, in your next meeting, make it your own, pass it, support it. We're asking all school districts. We're asking all of our seven villages in the town of Southampton to pass such resolutions. So that is why I'm here today. Bryony, good overview on everything. Thank you. Uh, we're excited in the town about this. On another topic, I want to thank the village of Sag Harbor and the Sag Harbor Fire Department particularly, uh, with their work at, at the, at the fire this week. It's the Noack Fire Protection District. We contract with the village of Sag Harbor for fire protection, and we get some of the fire finest fire protection in the state. So I want to thank you all for that. Um, and lastly, public hearing, two weeks on, uh, the grant application for the sewer district extension. And finally, good news, uh, we, uh, in a five-o vote today, we hired Chief O'Brien as our newest Southampton town officer.
You forgot to top the treasurer's.
He was interrupted.
I'm still on affordable housing notice.
I send the courtesy to the supervisor and the, uh, our representative in Southampton. I will now call the treasurer's report, if I may.
Thank you, sorry.
Hello, Board. Um, for the treasurer's report, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, the first month of the fiscal year, the revenues are up over the prior year, uh, mostly due to the timing of receiving Southampton's portion of their fire and ambulance contracts. For our expenditures, uh, with the new year budget, we are doing some spending early on. The highway department is doing some repairs to their building along with the HVAC services, uh, for the summer. Uh, the ambulance department has also purchased equipment to supply their ambulances. Police have increased their expenses over the prior year, having three part-time police officers. The fire department also purchased a new Pierce pumper truck. Uh, this was using the reserve funds. And we're also seeing a decrease in our debt service payments, uh, due to the installment debt being reduced by almost half what it was the prior year. Being reduced by almost half what it was the prior year. And finally, the sewer fund is increased spending over the prior year due to the upgrading. And counseling for the sewer treatment plant, along with the stucco and that's happening down there as well. And that's our report.
Excellent.
In short, we are solvent.
In the year, yes, we are. Good.
Would your motion to accept the departmental reports and the treasurer's report, is there a motion?
So, so.
A second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the matter and reports are approved. We move now to introductions. First up is a local law to amend Village Code two sixty-five point four oh one. Parking prohibited during all hours. On the east side of Columbia Street and the south side of John Street. This has been a particularly difficult problem this summer owing to the narrowness of the street and the. Having construction vehicles and the number of vehicles on that street. Would hear a motion to make the introduction of the local. Tom Gardella, is there a second? Josh Plum, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Push the screen. And. Should we, Liz, continue or?
No, there'll be a public hearing September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
That is the night of our next. Our next regular. We now return to public hearings. Local law to amend Village Code two twenty dash four point four, non-complying water. Non-comply waste section, grease trap requirements. Simply put, the county has expanded the requirement from nine hundred gallons to fifteen hundred gallons. And this is our legislation to conform to the new county protocol. There are some places where it's probably a lot, given the size of the business, but we are proceeding under the new protocol. As. Is there a motion?
I'd like the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
That's an open public hearing.
This is to open a public hearing on this proposal, this local law. And this too will come back to us for.
No, that's for right now. Is there anyone?
You know, grease trap, that means it's huge.
This will help with the plant. There's the nine hundred gallon capacity is just not up to it for certain premises. So, and I think everybody has until the end of twenty twenty-four to comply. So that this will be a slow. Because it means in some cases taking up sidewalk because grease traps are there. It'll help in the plant, grease is our enemy down there. So I think this is a good idea and I think it'll be good for the village.
Yeah. There's something like twenty-six. Places that must be affected by this, correct?
Not everybody, because anybody who came in front of the board in the last couple of years, we've asked them. To voluntarily put in a fifteen hundred gallon tank. So, and they've, they have agreed to do that. Some premises already had them because of the size of the outflow. So I don't know, I don't have a list of how many people that this actually.
I'm just wondering what the differences are, because it's always happened is, you know, I don't know. Sounds good up here, but I don't know actually the sizes we're talking about.
Well, it's nine hundred to fifteen hundred, so it allows for, you know, it's almost double the capacity. We, we do regular inspections as you remember. Two or three months ago, we had seven failures, which was the highest number of failures I've seen here looking after this five years. And that was, you know, we were already talking about this, but that really meant a thing. That the amount of grease that's showing up down the sewer treatment plant is.
I, I was just wondering about, is there room to do this?
Yeah, I think it's mostly.
So I'm asking for any businesses, will they not be able to comply?
I don't have an answer for that right now. I think that'll be up to each business to come to us and there's a. Yeah, it's a hardship, then we can.
Yeah, so that goes under hardship.
Yeah, same. Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments or questions on this matter? Our motion to close the public hearing on local law. I'll make the motion. Two twenty.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the matter is agreed to. Now, let it on the local law itself. Their motion approved.
I'll make the motion.
Aiden, is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the local law is adopted. Next up, item number two is a local law to amend Village Code two twenty to extend the sewer system. Service area from Bay Street. South of Long Rice Street to number twenty-four Rice Street. This is to open a public hearing on this local law. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The matter is approved. The public. The public hearing is open. And I would just observe that this comes out of a matter we discussed before, which was the biggest settlement involving property on Rice Street. And this was part of a judicial settlement on that dispute. In this case, to be funded by. Are there any questions or comments? I'm sorry.
My question was, we're extending it to twenty-four Rice Street, so does this, everybody, what are the residents that? Right, are they, they, who's paying for them to tie in? Train for Rice is paying for everything. Okay, yeah. For them, for those owners. And it happens to overlay on our area held plans, so it actually reduces the amount of work that the community will have to do. In extending sewer treatment. It takes three or four houses out of, out of the cost size, so this is benefit there.
Will Rice Street be closed first and for how long?
I don't really answer that. We, I think. On Madison Street, the days of actual closure during the church project were fairly minimal. It's crowded to one side of the street, obviously, but I don't know, we can certainly give you an estimate.
It's only a part of Rice Street.
It's just busy on the weekends and summer, it's near.
We're putting in, it'll be an eight inch five or five feet, so it's not.
And it's at least thirty days away.
Yeah.
That will be passed. So. Wait, the, the motion adjourned goes over to.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is approved. This will be calendared for the September meeting. We have no other continuing public hearings. We now go to discussion items. We're going to start with a relatively small item and reflecting a piece of work and. Marion, do you want to make the introduction of this matter?
Sure.
Did you explain where it came from and then we'll introduce.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Eddie, ninety-six Hampton Street. About two years ago, it was suggested to the board and to the trustees that we engage in climate smart communities. Which is a New York State program. It's a little bit like being an Eagle Scout. You do this task, you do this task, you do this task. It culminates perhaps in grants and recognition by New York State. That you've taken certain steps to be more environmentally conscious. So, I wasn't going to do the work. I got a series of three interns. And Jacob Adio is here. He is the intern who has brought this to completion this month. So Jacob?
This is to put up the paperwork on the screen.
It's a short slide presentation. It's about six slides. Kathy, what's the issue? You know what, maybe you slip to the next item, discussion item.
Put it over for a few minutes while that gets done. We'll come back to that. Thank you. Thank you, Jacob. We'll get back to you. All right, next up is. A, a matter that has been under discussion for the last few years, at least in the village. And this has to do with Azure Rest, Sag Harbor Hills. And responses in those communities to the. Pressure change and many of the issues we're dealing with throughout the village. That challenge us in terms of value, generational change and. These unique communities have operated for most of their history from three property organizations, property owner associations. Each with a president. So they are basically a lotta of three presidents who are here tonight. Who will subscribe to as a proposal they'd like to bring forward. Our proceeding tonight on this matter is informal. There is no introduction per se, but it is a preview. Of a proposal that we expect to take up in the next couple of months. So I introduce Harold Taylor. This is Jason Moore, two residents, joined by a third resident who is now our Chair of the ARB and. They will present what is a.
Yeah, yeah. Thank, thank you, Merrill Rocker and thank the trustees for inviting us to make this presentation. I, I hope everyone can hear you, hear me. I am trying to use my scream at the kids' voice. I don't really have anymore since my children have left the home. But I, I will do my best to speak up so that you can hear what I, what I say. And thankfully, I was going to do a PowerPoint and I decided to ditch it. So, so here we go. Merrill Rocker, you, you did, I think, a good job of introducing what we're here to talk about today. And that is a proposal to make the Azure Rest, Sag Harbor Hills, and Nittawa Beach communities. Part of a new overlay zoning district. And what I'm going to do today, what we're going to do today is just give you a broad outline of what that overlay district will look like. And. Lisa is going to do all the heavy lifting on that part of it. I get the fun part. To just talk a little bit about our community, introduce it to you. And then speak a little bit about why we're here and why we think these communities should be. And I hate to use the term singled out, because I think one of the, a lot of the things that I'm presenting today. Are things that could apply and help the community at large. But what I want to talk about is why we think these communities should be. Part of the new overlay district. I'm sure many of you, if not most of you, know a lot, or at least some about our, about our community. But, you know, for much of our existence, we've been a bit of a secret in Sag Harbor. Which is a little bit surprising because our communities comprise about one-third of the homes in the village. If you don't know where our communities are, it's when you're heading down one fourteen towards East Hampton. If you go to. The left, the communities east of Havens Beach, there are what we call our little slice of heaven. Three communities founded seventy-five years ago. By the founders of the Azure Rest community. Three communities who have, you know, lived in a way that we think is very, very special. The Azure Rest community is seventy-five years old. They're celebrating their anniversary. This weekend, we're all looking forward to their presentation. My community that I'm the president of, Nittawa Beach, is seventy years old. And Sag Harbor Hills and Lisa is the president of that association. They are seventy-two. So we're, 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 we've been here a while. And these communities are. One of the few remaining traditionally African-American beach communities. So what's been happening here that has led us to this point? And I think what's happening in our communities, you know, mirrors a lot of what's happening. Throughout the village and frankly throughout the Hamptons. Property values are rising, right? They're rising rapidly. And with that, you know, comes, you know, some benefits. Homeowners now have equity to levels that they have not had in the past. But with that comes challenges, I mean, challenges like things you've been talking about earlier today. What, what do we do with house? So. But what does that mean for our homeowners in communities like Azure Rest, Nittawa, and Sag Harbor Hills? For many. Those developments are transformative. Especially in a community like ours, where we've had to deal with. The F effects of things that have played this country for. Centuries. I'm talking about the effects of systemic racism. Like predatory lending. Like redlining. Like overt discrimination. Those are the things that our founders faced when they founded these communities. But that, but now with the increasing values, that's transformative. And how many or most of our residents embrace that transformation. But while this is welcome for some. The changes have also been somewhat unsettling to some of our homeowners. And the concern has been that with the recent. With the recent changes. There's a fear that there will usher in. Unwelcome changes in our community. Changes in our culture. And erosion of the history, things that our community have cherished for seventy-five years. Though for some. This real estate boom, real estate development, has become a proxy for cultural erosion. Now, and even though. Those things that I've been talking about is important in our community, character, culture. Even though those things have never actually resided in a particular home style or architecture. For a vocal few in our community. This has resulted in an aggressive and unauthorized effort. Towards the imposition of some sort of village architectural. Historical designation and the limitations that come with that. This view is based, in my opinion. On an erroneous and frankly, illogical position. That restricting architectural change is somehow synonymous with preserving community and culture. So these things as a background is what led frankly us here. And it led to the formation of what we call the tri-community. And it led to the formation of what we call the Tri-Community Working Group. Formed with these factors that I just mentioned in mind. So what happened? Our homeowners expressed some serious concern about the unauthorized local historic district designation efforts. And more importantly, the potential for architectural restrictions on their homes. And some of those homes were no more than bungalows that our founders could have afforded at their time that are now sitting on multimillion dollar lots, lots whose value is tied into the land, not that bungalow. So the three presidents, me, Lisa, and Steve, with the support of our communities, formed the Tri-Community Work. Now, the Tri-Community Working Group is made up of a small group of homeowners. There's 14 other homeowners in addition to me, Lisa, and Steve, who make up this group. And our charge was to research, analyze the options for preservation, and to, when we're done, come back with a proposal to our communities. Now, I didn't know when we started this committee that working group would be such an apt title, but, but it was. We, we worked hard on this issue. We started this process in March of 2021. We met every week, almost without exception, from March until we made this presentation in, in September. We had a diverse group of members on this committee. When I mean diverse, not just in every way, but also in opinion. People who were all over the map as to what they thought were the right things to do for our community. Some said nothing, some said historic preservation, and there was everything in between. What we started with in this committee was to look at what each individual meant when we thought about conserving a community. What did conservation of our community and what was important in a community, what did that mean to our members? And everyone, everyone said it's the sense of closeness in our community. The fact that when you walk down the street, you know our neighbors. When you go to our beautiful beach, we can sit on it comfortably, knowing that everyone around us is friends or family. It's the, it's the tree bots that we have, the rustic look. Those are all the things that we talked about. Not a single person said it was the architecture. Not a single person started talking about saving these bungalows that got our neighborhood that. But that's not to say that there weren't things that we thought we could do to address in a zoning way the issues that people raised and the things that were affecting our community at the time. And we did this by looking at everything. We looked hard at the current village code. We engaged with the state Historic Preservation Office and looked at their standards and met with their officials. We looked hard into the federal Department of Interior Standards for historic districts. We looked at similar commu- communities who have addressed these issues in various ways. And, and we did much, much more. We met with everyone who would meet with us in the village, the village communities, the ARB, the zoning board, trustees, both Merrill Raca and Mayor Hawkeye. We, we did our homework and considered every available option. Guided by that foundation, the working group developed a proposal for an overlay district that we believe addresses the unwanted changes that are coming into our community without diminishing the rights, with legitimate property rights of our residents, especially our long-term residents. Now, we presented this proposal to Mayor and the trustees last September. I actually have some copies of the letter that we submitted with me. I'll leave them here, I don't have enough for everyone. If people want to take a copy. And we've met since then with the mayor and trustees on this issue, which is what brings us here today. But before, before we presented this to Mayor, we made sure that what we were presenting was what our homeowners wanted. We are elected representatives of our community. We could not, I would not present something for approval by this, by, by this village that did not get broad support of our homeowners. So what did we do? We had two Zoom meetings that were incredibly highly attended by our homeowners, where we went through in detail our proposal, what we did, and our options. We answered every question that our homeowners had at those Zoom sessions. Thereafter, we put it out for a vote. We submitted a, you know, online vote poll to our homeowners, asking them if they would approve our submission of this proposal to the village for approval. We were overwhelmed with the response. 95% of our homeowners voted in favor of this proposal. The vote was 204. 204 to 10. Only have 330 homes in the community. So that kind of response was over, overwhelming. So I'm going to stop here and let Lisa talk some about the proposal. And I think when she'll, she's done, I might have a word or two to say to wrap things up. But I'll just say, just to preview a little bit, and I don't want to steal your thunder, Lisa. Our proposal is focused on basically three things. Stabilizing our community, enforcement of the current code, and representation in the village. We believe it strikes the right balance to ensure that a vibrant and desirable community in Azareth, Nittawa, and Sag Harbor Hills will be present for generations to come.
Thank you, Eric. Lisa, good to see you.
Good evening, Merrill Raca and trustees. And thank you so much, Eric, for your introduction of our proposal. It surely resonates with many in the room this evening. And I'm confident in our description of the pillars of our proposal will as well. Our Tri-Community Working Group Sands Overlay District Proposal is aligned with the existing village code. As Eric mentioned, our three pillars are stabilization, enforcement, and representation. And I'll reveal how our proposal is in keeping with the existing village code provisions. Stabilization. Our homeowners have nurtured our family-oriented community for more than 70 years, as Eric mentioned, where children may safely enjoy the beach in the neighborhood with neighbors looking out for one another. We value our 20 single-family residential use in our neighborhood, and our overlay districts would be zoned as such and continue as strictly a residential neighborhood. Special exceptions would be prohibited in our overlay district. Pre-existing special exceptions granted by the village would continue to be grandfathered. In order to curb the development of big mansions, which have appeared in our community and throughout Sag Harbor generally, homes within our overlay district would not exceed 4,000 square feet without a variance. Note that per the existing village code, a lot must be slightly more than half acre or 0.57 of an acre to build a 4,000 square foot house. Putting this in perspective, the overwhelming majority of lots in our community are less than a half acre and would not be eligible to construct a 4,000 square foot house in our community even with a variance. Additionally, our overlay district would not permit more than two accessory structures, such as a pool and poolhouse. These proposal items are in keeping with Code Section 300-9.10 gross floor area for certain residential dwellings in our 20 OD districts and Village Code Section 300-12.5 variance standards. In order to preserve the serene landscape within our community as well as maintain some privacy on our property, limited tree removal would be permitted and clear cutting would be strictly prohibited in our overlay district. Clear cutting has been a problem throughout the village. And this proposal item is in keeping with Section 300-9.11 Supplemental Use and Dimensional Regulations. If the structure is built in a manner which deviates from the approved construction plans, the homeowner would not be granted a variance upon application to the zoning board. Construction per approved construction plans would be required in our overlay district. This proposal item is in keeping with Code Section 300-13.9 Enforcement. In order to assist with stormwater drainage and prevent runoff onto neighboring properties, which has been a problem in varying intensity, non-permeable driveways would be prohibited in our overlay district. This item is in keeping with Village Code Section 300-9.9 Surface Water Runoff and Code Section 300-17. Chapter 300, Article 13.6 of the existing village code requires an application to the ARB to request issuance of a building permit for proposed exterior alterations and construction. Criteria which the ARB considers in each application include gross floor area, building height, volume, and quality of architectural materials. This requirement and corresponding criteria would continue to apply in our overlay district. Our stabilization pillar will enable a current homeowner to potentially expand their home, not just once, but twice, as a Sag Harbor Hills homeowner did 25 years ago, initially expanding their modest two-bedroom house with a great room the entire width of the house, and thereafter a second addition of a master ensuite, nearly doubling the size of their home for their growing family to enjoy with their children and grandchildren. Our second pillar is enforcement. Over the years, homeowners in all three communities have witnessed construction of oversized homes on lots and variances approved to eliminate pyramid restrictions and have not received radius required notice of public hearings for ARB applications or zoning board applications. Unfortunately, the prior village attorney shared at a zoning board meeting held in the spring of 2021 that a homeowner's attendance at the relevant meeting cures the notice violation even though the homeowner did not have an opportunity to review the application or conduct thoughtful diligence on how the application may adversely affect their homes. And this was not acceptable to our working group. So for applications involving alterations on a lot within our overlay district, which applications must be published in an official newspaper in advance of the public hearing, we will require 10 business days advanced notice by certified mail, return receipt, proof of mailing given to the village clerk, at least three business days in advance of the public hearing, and proof of signage at the lot facing the street to the village clerk, at least five business days in advance of the public hearing. If the proof of radius required notice and/or signage is not timely given to the village clerk, then the application shall automatically be postponed to a future public hearing after compliance. Notices will be sent to the homeowner's address on the latest New York State, Suffolk County, Sag Harbor Village, Assessment Roll, and Levy Schedule. Our homeowners may opt to receive email communication instead of having to mail it. This proposal item is in keeping with both Code Section 300-13.3 Review Procedures and Code Section 300-12.6 Specific Variance Standards. The village applications checklist would set forth the requirements for applications to each of the village boards and committees shall apply to our overlay district. Homeowners may take and submit a photo of violations they observe within the overlay district, such as clear cutting or storage of unauthorized equipment or material to the village code enforcement officer or building inspector to trigger an investigation. This item is in keeping with Code Section 205-6 Enforcement. Initially, the association presidents will meet quarterly with the village code spec- enforcement inspector, officer, and/or building inspector, fostering a working relationship with them and keeping them aware of issues that arise in our community. Our third and final pillar is representation. Homeowners in our community have consistently supported the village through payment of taxes and family support for business establishments in the village. Now is the time for residents in our community eligible to vote in Sag Harbor and with familiarity of our community's African-American history to have definitive representation on the village boards, including the Harbor Committee, ARB, zoning board, and planning committee. As our homeowners have been transitioning more to full-time residency and participation in civic life in Sag Harbor, we've had representation in recent years, such as Steve Williams, serving on the ARB and recently appointed chair last month, Dr. Hamel Willoughby on the zoning board, Will Sharp on the Harbor Committee, and Robert Adams as an alternate on the ARB. Our proposal, if approved by the village trustees, would codify such board and committee appointments. This proposal is in keeping with the village code sections on committee and board establishments and memberships via mural appointments. As you've heard, our overlay district is designed to achieve stabilization of the scale, character, and essence of our residential community, promote enforcement of the village code and our overlay district requirements, and ensure representation from our community on the village boards and committees which have the same decisions which affect our communities. Nittawa Beach President, Harold Taylor, will provide closing remarks. Thank you.
I actually don't have much more to say, but I do want, of course, thank you all for taking the time to listen to this and consider opposing, thank you, in advance for your spirit. Listen, I, I think the, the things that we're proposing are common sense proposals that really, I think, hit the sweet spot of what we need to do for our community and balancing all of the things that we really were faced with, you know? Eroting, hurting property values, demographic change. You know, a lot of things going on in our community that are hovering over these issues and in some ways founding the real focus on what we can and should do to address that. And I think our working group, you know, we, our way through all of that to come to something that is right. And I'm frankly really proud of how this group carried itself and what we, and what we came up with. So, I mean, your questions, maybe.
Not just yet.
So I just want to close and say that, you know, we, we are just looking forward to the future discussions on this issue. Discussions on this issue when we get into the meet and get an opportunity to address all changes. But I hope when we do that, that you guys will remember. And consider this discussion to understand where it came from, you know, what we're looking for. And why we think it's so important to our community to have this overlay district. Not only form, but form including all the things that we talked about here today. Thank you very much.
As I described, this is the start of bringing the conversation that we've been involved in. As Carol pointed out, back to the previous mayor and any number of people along his trail. And now with this discussion tonight, we hope to have it fully in the public domain and invite input. As this discussion goes forward, I want to hand over, as was requested to today. By Olivia White, her thoughtful letter on this subject. And I said we would take it as part of this introductory record. So I would encourage people who have comments, comment. To bring it forward. Certainly writing form is good. And we'll take a few minutes now. These are for clarifying questions. This is not to debate the merits of the proposal because it's still in form at this point. Any questions for the three presidents based on what you personally have to say?
I was just wondering if. Thank you. Thank you all both for this wonderful presentation. I was wondering if it's possible in those three districts. To prevent one person from buying four lots and putting a four thousand square foot house on it.
Our proposal that limits home size. Will not present, prevent someone from buying multiple lots, but it will prevent them from putting a large home on them. So I'd be okay if you're for lots, if you keep your house within, within the confines of our size restriction.
I think it's fair to say that it would deter it.
It would really prevent it. Our, in our district, there will be a strict home size restriction regardless of lot size.
Could I ask one clarification? Are you going to prohibit the combining of two lots into one larger lot?
That, that is not a proposal that is in our, in our.
But I'm sorry, but you said you have acre, four thousand square feet.
No, everything's under half acre.
There are, there are lots in our community up to about a half acre. That's the largest lot.
But I thought, I could be wrong, that you said that you were not going to allow a house over four thousand square feet unless it was a half acre, but most, most. Most lots are less.
No, the, the four thousand square foot size limitation is strict.
Any house.
Regardless, anyhow.
Any house, even if you have five lots, you'll only afford.
I misunderstood. Thank you for the clarification.
I think it's amazing. I mean, I think it's fantastic what you just proposed. The clarity is unbelievable.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Stephen Roach. Should I come? Yeah. My name is Stephen Roach. The resident of Sac Harbor for my whole life. Family built in nineteen sixty five and prior to that. They've been, they have been in presence here in Sac Harbor for seventy years. I'm a member of this August committee. And I want to, I want to say.
Ten to pass president for many years of the.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning that. But I, I want to say to you that I've seen the demographic changes over the years, obviously.
Speak up.
I've seen the demographic changes over the years. But the bottom line is, it's not about. The demographic changes. It's about maintaining the character of the community and the beauty of the community. And that's what I think that we've accomplished here. I'm, there will have been five generations in my family in, in the house that I'm currently the owner of. My wife, I currently, currently the owner of. And I'm looking forward to my children and their grandchildren to maintain a presence here in this community. And I'm very supportive of what we've done because as an African American, it's important for us to have generational wealth. We really, my, my parents and grandparents would be proud of the fact. That we have created generational wealth. The house was built in nineteen sixty five. I was nine years old. The house was built for fourteen thousand dollars. Now it's worth. And I want to have the ability to pass that on to my family. And I think that we've been able to obtain that more even more. So thank you.
I would say to me continue. I thank you for the work we've seen you do, the work we've done together and what we will be doing going forward. And I want to know if anyone else wants to be heard on this subject tonight.
My name is Georgia K. I'm the executive director of Eastville Community Historical Society. I'm also a board trustee of the Preservation League of New York. And I have been involved with this effort for many years since the beginning. I would also like to note that Renee has submitted her remarks. So she, I have them with me and she asked me to read them into the record. So she, thanks for the, thank you for the opportunity tonight to overall, the overall discussion. Of villages, of preservation goals of Sands, of Sands area and the village requirements and responsibilities. Of the certified local government. While we are a citizen resident group. Which engage in necessary collaboration to document, designate, and advocate. The states, on the state and national levels. We realize that it is the village's sole role to review all village properties as a part of the CLG. Contracted authority and to pursue preservation to those properties that are most worthy of preservation and designation. Since Sands organization inception in twenty sixteen. It has demonstrated a commitment to the village and the safe processes of information sharing and transparency. To this effort and to the importance of preservation, the area was spotlighted of course on many. Websites and articles and documentaries, including Preservation Long Island. And on the state's seven to save locales list. In addition to Preservation Long Island, it found that it was also listed on Long Island's most endangered places. Tonight's meeting, tonight's meeting and the two public hearings which should follow proceed CLG processes. Will allow us to gain shared facts and not hearsay in an open document matter. As a background, there was an information package that she submitted from twenty twenty. And it chronicles the Sands organizations and its preservation guidelines. And so you have a copy of that as well. The village is to designate historic properties. It is important for us to reference the village's nineteen ninety four historic district expansion. Which noticed that there needed to be considerations for the future expansion. Which is now representative of the ends of the area of Sands. The only reason why Sands was not submitted back then, it was because of the only four of, fell short of four to eight years. Of the fifty year requirement. So the nineteen ninety four expansion nomination forum stated that Sands area deserves for a future study. As a result area for built environment of African Americans. On the record of board of trustees unanimously approved to continue our efforts to gain historic designation. Proposed historic district guidelines were submitted early in twenty twenty by the Sands organization. That gained both state and national registry for Sands area. It looked at the existing code and provides guidelines for applying codes to mid century homes based on cultural significance. And updated training direction for individual housing assessment. The state reviewed guidelines and clarified preservation approaches to avoid. Any misinformation that has been flying around to be applied and also used by the Department of Interior. Sac Harbor Village initiated the twenty nineteen research study. Conducted by the village at that time of the existing historic district. The village indicated properties now are the age of fifty years old and the mid century homes sometimes show some remarkable value. So where are we now? Almost seven years of local, state, and national engagement. We understand the village plans to move on the CLG role and process. We commend this administration for that. In order to communicate over the years. We have provided a multi, multiple academic research support, notable endorsements from national, state, and local leaders. In addition to expert cultural preservation input. We also kicked off our efforts in twenty sixteen by gathering individual petitions from fifty one percent of owners of that requested. Historic district and that was submitted to the village. Village code states landmark that the same meaning as the term is historic and cultural landmark are the same. As defined by our code three hundred two point two. Additionally, in twenty nineteen, three individual letters explaining state and national designations were sent out to the owners by the state. Only two owners objected at that time. The village did not ask to consider or document the Sands area designation based on its cultural significance. While an earlier effort to review neighborhoods occurred in twenty sixteen. It misjudged the age of the communities and a rare value of importance of cultural significance. Despite the lack of conformity and significance that was overlooked. We are not the captain's houses and we require a certain plans community and to be judged that way as Sands. In twenty nineteen, the Sands organization also provided an industry research. Which documents facts regarding historic district home values collected across many years and circumstances. The research sponsor confirmed that there will be no dueling that study of Sac Harbor. The data held up time after time again and the head of SHPO at the time underscored the very same point. Now the historic district mark, holds market value versus other area homes. If anything, historic district homes fare better than they're not being protected at all. Know this, we started our journey as asking for resident support of the area landmarking. And knew the village would consider possible restrictions to preserve the area's historic scale and character into the future. Scale and character code prevails today as requirements in all village locales per code. You will hear about another alternative approach of the overlay. Almost all the alternative overlay approach copies existing nonhistoric district code. The tri-community overlay approach to preservation has three strategic shortfalls. One, it ignores the historic district designation security against erasure or elimination as any area over time. Two, permits unlimited demolition. And three, it's not permanent and can be changed or deleted like other executive orders. Or village code with subsequent village, a change of village leadership. This last point in the tri-communities FAQs. While the CLG process guidelines explicitly direct CLG municipalities to not engage. In nor considering petitions, we know that below points will still be made. You will hear about two recent surveys. One survey directed asks how historic district preferences would limit processes. Of responses received from only one third of all owners. Hundred and twenty five survey responses out of three hundred plus owners with seventy five owners saying no to historic designation. The second and last survey asked if there could be, if, if they could submit alternative overlay proposal to historic district. This one received two hundred plus owner vying and approval and submitted this alternative overlay approach. The three presidents positions result as opposites into the historic district versus just agreeing to submit. Here is an actual question. Do you support the submission of the tri-communities working group overlay district proposal? To the village as an alternative to previously submitting and pending historic district guidelines proposal. Submitted by Renee Simons for Sands organization on March second, twenty twenty one and then June twenty twenty one. Our Sands organizational goals were simple in two thousand and sixteen and remain unchanged today. We transparently followed the known CLG processes and wanted to gain local, state, and national registration permission. As a historic district for Sands area based on the area's documented cultural significance. While we have state and national, our local standing and preservation are still up in the air and it is time to land the plane. We are looking for the village to perform its CLG responsibilities. Yes, that was Renee's letter. And then I just have my own personal comments to you here tonight. Considering potentially voting on the overlay proposal does not preclude the village from also considering the local historic district designation of Sands. Why not consider both as the current proposal is outside of the ARB process and has little to no merit of what has already been achieved. State and national historic designation. The Sands historic district. Is, should be afforded the opportunity for a public hearing. That is only, the only true measure of, of level of agreement, which is not needed. And they should have the same opportunity as being given here tonight. Why hasn't the Sands historic district designation been given equal treatment? A public hearing and allow all residents to exercise their civic right for their voices to be heard. We are asking the village board to instruct the ARB to follow the process for historic designation provided by article thirteen. Of village zoning code, section thirteen and four. And if the ARB or any other board is malignant or derelict in their charge of duties and responsibilities. We are asking the village board to override their decision and comply with its own code to ensure the safety of processes. The ARB hasn't exercised due diligence and the proof resides in the lack of regular comprehensive reviews and or updates. To local designations. As you know, it has been updated since nineteen ninety four. And I may add, of which Eastville fought for inclusion in that nineteen ninety four survey. We have been sounding the alarm since nineteen seventy three for inclusion in all of Sac Harbor's contributions. Again, we are asking for equity now, action on the Sands historic district hearing. To be borne before the people and for their voices to be heard and to stop the biases. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. If I might, I just want to respond to one thing. And that is the invitation to Renee was fully and equally extended. Would you not?
Well, there wasn't due notice and I'll say that too because I had to come in, in her stead. And it's not about her presence here. We're asking for, we have a petition that has been on the record and we want.
The guidelines. Renee, I didn't speak, running up to this and she had a previous planned travel this week. So I'd be sorry to hear you, my friend, for representing that this was not an equal talk.
It was, it was two, she told, she found out two weeks before it was actually on the record. And she didn't find out by any village officials.
We didn't, we didn't schedule this with anybody until a couple of weeks.
Yeah, well, that's not due notice. That's all I'm saying. It wasn't enough time for her to prepare.
It is our intention that the good word being down by Renee and you and your colleagues will be heard. As part of this process, as it just was.
But this isn't the process, mayor. It's outside of the village ARB. If the only way it's being heard is if you take it out there per review, but it's not.
Well, that is.
Not the proper.
I, I do not want this debate in here tonight. But Georgia, I just want, if you feel that, if you feel that this has not been fair treatment. What's in the purview of the wards and this board is well known. But I will work with you and Renee as we look forward to ensure full adequate hearing. It's the most I can promise. Sarah, did you want to be here?
Yeah, I, this, this may surprise everybody, but we fully enthusiastically support this overlay. This is wonderful. Fabulous. However, the village passed in the nineteen seventies, as you all know, a landmark ordinance. And back then in the nineteen seventies, the village was experiencing the kind of back end of the post-war suburban boom on Long Island. And the way they dealt with the same redevelopment pressures that you described is the landmark ordinance, or the whole of Main Street and all of the old district, as Dorjet said, that was designated in the eighties and nineteen ninety-four. There would be no protections from demolition and redevelopment, and the village came up with its landmark ordinance, its Article thirteen of the zoning code. Please read it. Please read it, because this is how you protect yourself from these very things. And back then, the duly appointed board, the village board, the mayor elected, beg your pardon, as well as the appointed CLG ARB Historic Preservation Board adopted this ordinance, and it was supported by the people. And in nineteen eighty-six, the village became a certified local government, and I won't bore you to death with what that means. But a key part of that, and this is so important for me as the primary advocate for historic preservation, and I'm doing my role as our mission base for my organization. And as a certified local government, the deal breaker for being, for achieving that kind of really special designation is, among many other things, having an ordinance that raises to a certain level, that checks certain boxes. And the, one of the most important things is the ability to designate without homeowner approval. So it works the way, this is a crude comparison, but it works the way wetland designation works. There's a independent criteria set that government officials at all levels, local, state and national, use to figure out, is this a wetland? And it has nothing to do with what the property owners say. It needs to be impartial. It needs to be fair. It needs to be democratic.
I'm sorry, you're getting, you're getting far afield here.
There's criteria for historic designation as well.
Criteria for wetlands as well. What I ask you to consider as an old friend of the Slea, I guess we can call that a program. And you and I have had this conversation. It's, and should I continue or you speak for my colleague to do everything you have heard of your script?
Okay.
We are respectful of our CLG status. We understand it. We understand that in recent cycles, without casting aspersions on previous mayors, that some of these got bias. We are going to catch that up, and I think, and I'm not speaking for our colleague in who couldn't be here tonight, that we can see much of what has been discussed here happening in parallel, in platter.
Yes, absolutely.
I would like to encourage everybody to not see this as adversarial.
No, it's not at all. So may I just finish?
My opening remarks said that we do both.
That's where I'd like us to reach this, that what we're mutually committed to is as many good ideas as there are, being positively and respectfully on the table.
Yeah, so we, we would love to see the process outlined in Article thirteen of the zoning code for, you know, designation of a district or landmark in the village move forward, and then this board vote it up or down after the public hearings. So that process was designed to be fair, and it served the village so well since the nineteen seventies. And I think it's a great ordinance. You guys have a wonderful preservation ordinance. We would really love to see it, you know, work.
To be brought up to date. I understand.
No, just do the process. That's all we would like to see. But we would love to see you take up the possibilities local designation for Sands based on your criteria. And then I have one more question, because I asked this when the waterfront zoning amendments went through, and I see it back again in this. It's on page two of this Sands proposal, the overlay. There's a list of different districts. One of them is the Historic Overlay District. And I had sent a letter to the village and some emails that I never got a clear answer. I can't find anything in the ordinance about an overlay district for historic. So, you know, what, what is that? Is, is an ongoing question. Okay, because it's, it's sort of something Well, it's in, it's also in the waterfront zoning overlay. It's, it's in other things. But it's not in the code. There's no historic zoning overlay. There's a, the Article thirteen Historic Preservation District, so that, that's kind of a bit of a confusion.
Okay, Sarah, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. This is a wonderful proposal. We fully support it. But please also consider the designation.
We're going to leave some things in the air tonight.
And thank you for, you know, I mean, I could be here for an hour clarifying and correcting some of the statements that you just heard. I just want to make a couple of points, okay? Dorjet is a great advocate for preservation in her community, Eastville. She's not a resident of Sands. She didn't poll any of the Sands community. She is not supported by the overwhelming majority of
Carol, I'm really going to ask you not to do this. Georgia is a friend of all of us, and her status here tonight is as a longtime advocate and a recognized leader of the historic society, and I don't want to see this personal on any level. And what I was hoping to avoid tonight is this kind of thing.
Let me just make one point. Okay, um, this question of Sag Harbor being a CLG. It is. It's a certified local government, and the mayor has discussed that it's going to go through that process and assess whether communities in the village should be part of a CLG. And that process is not going to be or should not be limited to Sands. There are other communities where the housing stock is similar, frankly, more aged than Sands. We have Redwood, we have Misery. Any determination as to whether communities, homes become historically designated must be consistent. It's not a cultural thing. It's not something designed to preserve culture or character. Architectural designation, historic district designation at the local level is architectural. So drive throughout community, drive through Sands. Tell me, if you think the architectural stock should be historic district. I mean, Sarah was talking about downtown.
Truly, truly, Harold. I love you, man, but we are not going to have this debate. This is a process. Everything is raised here. We'll be discussed.
I just, I mean, thank you for that, Mayor. I just heard so many things.
I understand. I understand.
I did, I did not want to leave this group with a lot of misconceptions about where things stand.
And I, and I There will be additional opportunities. Clearly, we have our work ahead of us. And what we know for sure is that we have a lot of very strong sincere beliefs that have to be addressed as we go. So if you will allow me to exercise the chair to ask us to move on to the rest of the agenda, we will be back at each and everybody. Congratulations, Dorjet, the only person here tonight who had the good sense to bring their own chair. So this is, I would conclude this, and C F Jacob, Jacob, is your presentation ready?
Good evening, and thank you all for your time. My name is Jacob Adio, and I am the third of, or sorry, the final of the series of three interns working on the Climate Smart Communities project here. I am a student at Stony Brook University in the School of Marina Atmospheric Sciences, and I've also been receiving course credit in the process of this internship. So just as a refresher for what Climate Smart Communities is, and also for those in the audience who may not yet know, Climate Smart Communities is a New York State, well, it's a program. It's going to help local municipalities combat and adapt to climate change. The way it's going to do this is it will incentivize local governments to undertake actions, and each of these actions are going to be worth a certain number of points. Once a hundred twenty points have been accumulated, the village will be able to submit for bronze status. Right now, we have no source status, and this bronze status would be to a direct benefit of the village as it will contribute points to the New York State CFA grant applications. So just a quick financial update here for the solar installation. The profits of the solar installation have exceeded the cost, or sorry, the profits have exceeded the cost. We are in excess of four thousand dollars through cost avoidance. And the, we will continue to, through cost avoidance, have two thousand dollars a year at the current energy rates. The EV charger since August of twenty twenty has netted roughly six thousand dollars, and the monthly profits have more than doubled in the second year of operation. So if combined between those two things, we have ten thousand dollars profits there. Where we are in Climate Smart Communities, we have completed a few actions in Climate Smart Communities these past few years, or for this past year, we've completed an energy audit, we've put up the webpage, we've submitted for social media, we've completed greenhouse gas inventory and more. Currently, so this currently has put us to a hundred sixteen or necessary one hundred twenty points to submit for bronze status.
Is the conversion to LED lights in those points?
The conversion to LED lights is, once we actually do the installation, that's where we'll receive points for that.
How many points would we receive for that?
That, that one is worth twelve points, so it's a significant number of points. Yeah, that, yeah, so we are currently at a hundred sixteen points. We only need four more points, and we are in process of one action that we're projected to be able to complete by August nineteenth. And the action that we do have in progress is benchmarking. So what we're doing in benchmarking is we have gathered for eleven key buildings that are over one thousand square feet, village-owned buildings, we will upload those from vendors like PSEG and National Grid into an EPA portal, and in this portal, they're going to measure energy use intensity, and it will be able to compare it to similar buildings all throughout the state. And what this will do is it will let us save on certain parts, we'll see like where we can be using everything more efficiently. You can't manage what you can't measure, so this will be able to measure that. We do still need a resolution to commit the village to ongoing benchmarking for this project, to receive these four points for the action, and once that's done, we will also be qualified for a five thousand dollar assertive grant. So the actions needed by the village board is to just pass this benchmarking resolution to commit us to ongoing benchmarking. This resolution, we have, is really, there's not much more work to be done here. We've done most of the heavy lifting, and the ongoing resolution to commit us to it is really only a matter of entering like ten to twelve different points into the portal every month. So, yeah, and should we do that, we would be planned, we'd be ready to submit by August nineteenth. So, yeah, thank you. I would like to thank the mayor, the deputy mayor, the trustees, Kayla Casio, for your ongoing support. I'd like to thank the Climate Smart Communities coordinator, Mary Ann Eddy, for everything there. I would like to thank the Climate Smart Communities Task Force, and especially Nat Ego See, who has been a great help. I'd like to thank the Environmental Advisory Committee for everything they've been doing there, and also the previous interns, Sophie Hilli and Emily Alex.
The two chargers that we got down on all, is anybody been using the second charger?
All right, so there, for most of the time during the week, we have, we, we have one in occupancy, but there are times during the weekend that we will have actually both of them. Do you, I believe Michael has said something. We've been looking into that. There are times, yes, but both of them are
Yes, so it could be, it might be advantageous to look into putting another charger down there.
Jake, all the best to you. We appreciate your good work. We expect great things from you. We're going to go back to just a series of quick business items. And can I make a comment, is that possible?
I guess. Just a question, Liz, and also, also an observation. So when it comes to D E C regulations, can a village do things that are more stringent?
Thank you. Excuse me, one second. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're going to have an endurance contest. You have two hours. Thank you.
That you can be more stringent, but there's some areas of law where you're prohibited from acting. So it would depend on what your state to do. Every area of law is totally taken up by the state, and sometimes we're granted from acting in that area of law. And that goes with some, a lot of, a lot of D E C regulations are like that, I think. So it would depend on what you're talking about. Generally speaking, it can be more stringent than C O L I B.
Yeah, because out of interest, having, you know, obviously been here before, but not for a while. It's striking to me that the three major things that this board is addressing right now is affordable housing, the environment, and some, you know, historic overlay. The actual thing that really is most spread, from my way of thinking, is the environment here. You know, whatever Sands wants to do, and I think it's very good that they're addressing it, they're also on the debt. Whatever the affordable housing is, you know that I did a study that was of that, which is, that is not from what I heard, right, you're approaching the engineering part of it. The engineering cost of that study that I did to stop that area from flooding to the village was something in the range of sixty million dollars to actually make it work. So, I mean, I think that as a board, in these field, you know, memory in some ways, because some of those are informal studies, they can be formalized. But I do believe very strongly, and this is something I said before, that all of these are tied in, and there really is no separation from where commuting that is being populated more and more in the summer. We have a stressed infrastructure and an old infrastructure. And that unless you build into the code, in my mind, ways in which you address infrastructural needs for overlays, for example, it always seemed to me odd when Rich Warren did the code that there was a difference between the business and office district when they were adjacent to each other. It's arbitrary. Same thing is going to happen with the rest of it. It needs to be, you know, environmental overlay in my mind, unless it's addressed as a village, we're just kicking the ball down the line. But this project is doing is low hanging fruit. But this project is doing is low hanging fruit. It's giving us points. Just as a matter of fact, I think you'll remember, this is what 725 did and literally the same project 12 years ago. And so what happens to that now is that we're, we're always kind of doing catch-up. This is an opportunity not to do that with this environment, because it's overburdened. So I hope that we title three of these things in, I really feel important. I didn't get up when it was affordable housing because I didn't want it paying just that. Thank you. I would, I can probably get a copy that I gave to the grant agency, but the person to talk to is David Rhodes, who is the engineer that did it. There were many, many conversations that were formed with other engineers on the way. These are super sensitive areas. I mean, there's a man who talked about being here for 70 years. Well, I started coming here in 1952. I remember when that was like basically wetlands and people ran around and it was just junk in that parking lot. It's a flood here. My office was above, for even, for this village to be put in a position where it has to decide on that when it's so environmentally sensitive. Look what happened in Riverhead when there was inversion. We can talk about all kinds of things. I don't want to act as a bully pop, I think this is tough at the time. I'm just.
I've got three pages of agenda left here.
Okay, so I just wanted to say.
I hear you.
There's two of my offices next to me, but you can call me, I'm happy to, you know.
We know where to find you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Okay, now, this is the discussion section, we're going to try to give you some action items. First, under 11 dash 1, authorization to set 2022 bank resolutions and conciliation. Glad I want to report reconciliation, glad I want to report, grateful they enjoyed catching up here a little. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to. Number two, Genevieve from the floor of SAG Harbor Cinema, request permission to have their annual fundraiser September 24th, 6:30 to 11:00 PM. At SAG Harbor Cinema, it's a special event permit. Is there a motion?
Salute.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matter is approved. Number three, Joel Rosier requests authorization for commercial slim boring usage of dock, B dock, number 27. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
So, second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Chief McGuire requests to hire Eva Mojewski as a TCO retroactive to July 22nd, 2022. We, just catching her up, also requests that we accept the resignation of TCO Madison Stucker. We're in a season where people go back to school and moving around.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Just for the record, want to mention that Madison is going to join the college field hockey team at Malloy College on scholarship, and that's starting to grow with that. Next up, the resolution to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents pertaining to the town of East Hampton C P F water quality improvement program. This has complicated recent history. We have basically resubmitted, paid work, understated. We will now be amending it and he and I will be meeting with the town in the next.
Couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion approved. Ellen DiGardi, SAG Harbor Commerce.
Resolution for the state.
Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution number six, to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents pertaining to the New York State Consolidated Funding Application C F A program, which is the port of watershed study and speech. Who's missing an important item there? Yes, indeed.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Number seven, Ellen DiGardi is laying out the schedule for Harbor Fest, which came back and fold and we expect it to be a bigger event this year and we are extending portions of it into Snyder Park, particularly items that involve small children getting more run, room to run around and just being crowded onto.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. I'm sorry. Can we turn the H C off?
Sure.
Is that a motion?
Second.
Motion, Mike, okay. Resolution, authorizing Mayor Rocket to sign agreement with P W Grosser to prepare the final project report for the rehabilitation of Long Wharf. With any luck, this would be the last check to go out on this one.
Exactly, we had something coming. I'll make the motion.
Sorry. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Request from Kevin O'Brien, police chief, fire chief, to have Dale Stone moved from active probationary to full active member status of the fire department.
I'll make the motion and congratulations to Dale. You guys sat along.
I'll second that.
Number 10, I'm sorry, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion is agreed to. Number 10, a request from Kevin O'Brien, the chief, to have Stephen Miller, former chief, removed from honorary status and returned to full active member status as a member of the SAG Harbor Fire Department and he is a working member of the SAG Walker Back Police Department.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up, authorization for the clerk administrator, Kate Casio, to attend the N I COM fall training meeting in Saratoga Springs, New York during September. Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Authorization for Dee Yardley, superintendent of public, Public Works, to attend the N I COM public work session in Lake George in the beginning of October.
Salute.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Three to, Colleen Brudonis, Detective Fire Department, ladies and auxiliary, request permission to hold the annual girls' night out fundraiser, December 4th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. She also requests place to sign on Long Wharf and Route 114 to that.
I'll second.
Again, Colleen Brudonis, behaved ladies or auxiliary request permission to have a candy breakfast on August 28th, 2022, September 11th and October 2nd, change from 8:00 AM to noon. She also requests signs in Route 114 to that effect. Is there a motion?
Salute.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Kelly Dodds of SAG Harbor, which is Richard Kelly Dodds of SAG Harbor American Music Festival request permission to have a parade down Main Street to Marine Park on September 22nd from 6:30 to 7:30 PM featuring a 30-piece percussion ensemble. Some will remember, this has been here before. This is the getting the bees on the beach on Monday nights in the summer with their samba drums and the noise makers. And this will be the opening of the music festival.
And H J's good with this.
And just to clarify, it starts with Civil War monuments, so it's not all of H J's, it's just going to start right from Civil War down to Marine Park.
And this has gone through P D.
Yes, we're sent our thanks.
Okay, that's good. I just want to make sure before that, no problem.
I didn't get any negative feedback, so.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to. Number 16, resolution authorizing notice to proposers, R F P for the fire department interior renovations. Tom, do you have any comments on this?
Well, we sent out an R F P and we didn't get any response. So we're going to resubmit. It's for the kitchen renovation.
Right, that's part of that grant that was. Didn't get any response. It's silent at times.
It's to about nine or 10 people that requested it.
So we're hoping to get some of the equipment that's going to go into the new firehouse in that, so.
So that, that some could be reused.
Yes, yeah. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And it may be with the, after Labor Day, things get a little bit in terms of the demand of these kind of services. All those. A motion? Second, you made it. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, the motion is agreed to. Resolution to approve appointment of a member to the Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review. And this is our friend Megan Toy, who's already served us on the planning board and has been received at the A R B, in particular suited to her Asian training in the arts. The A R B looks at the aesthetic of properties as well as other characteristics. So I would make this motion, I'll make it.
I'll second.
And second, Tom, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, the motion is agreed to and Megan, thank you, congratulations, welcome back. Next up, let me close those, approve, proof.
Resolution.
Resolution number 18 is in writing here. I've got an adjusting the holiday pay for our part-time E M T basic critical care and paramedic. Now, this is bringing them into line with how we've been treating our other personnel. And this is simply recognizing that when the pay equivalency on the days they come in on holidays. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And the second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
I think I would add to that is that they get paid for 4th of July this year, right? That's not being taken care of.
Because the previous resolution, it was not one of the holidays.
Right, which is the reason why we had to put this in here.
Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Year's Day and some other.
It's the standard.
Okay.
This is, this is just catching up.
Yep.
All right, approval to pay bills, would hear a motion for all of them are on 7, 8, 11, 10, 11, 12. I don't know why there are those two numbers.
I'll second.
There are six of them.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. How they're opposed, disagreed to. Are there any other comments?
Well, I'll just say that having listened tonight to affordable housing, the environment and the SANS, we need this general, is it, what was the group proposing, a planning, how do I? Compreh, the word, comprehensive planning. The village, if you listen, just an outsider, which per se I am, instantly, this has come about in my mind, not so needed, a just comprehensive thing, everything. Good, because it all related to each other.
How does it assemble? What's the plan? How do these things?
It was a very good presentation. Thank you, mayor, for saying when someone's stuck.
Thank you. It's hard to say.
Yeah, yes, please.
Sure.
Kate Plum, Richard's Drive, I'm reporting on the Environmental Advisory Committee meeting, you know, we meet once a month. And one of the issues that we talked about, among the others, is enforcement. And then, you know, the, somebody brought up that what happens during, on the weekend, when Saturday morning a lot is cleared and there's no posted permit? I mean, I have here in this code business that you're supposed to have a tree clearing permit. It happened on next to Mr. Goodell's property. I looked around, there was no building permit. You know, and this is not the only thing. There was on July 23rd, it's Saturday night, the end of Long Wharf had a huge boat there and they were dining there for a long time and citizen came up and said, this is not, you're not supposed to block the end of the long wharf for a long period of time while you're dining. So what happens to a resident, you know, when this is going on? I mean, this little form that I gave out last week, you know, says, "Report violations to the village police." Well, nobody wants to hear from the village, I mean, on a Saturday night about it. Or it says, "In code enforcement," but we know code enforcement is operating between what, 9:00 and 4:00 during the weekday. So, you know, it's a, it's a conundrum and I heard it before, but enforcement, you know, that's an issue here. So we just would like to understand what are, because we do hear about it on our committee. Neighbors call and say, hey, they're clear cutting my property on Saturday morning, but what, what is my recourse? Do they have a permit? How are we going to know that they have a permit, they're allowed to do this? I mean, in these, this paperwork, which I think is in the code, no clearing, rubbing or other soil disturbances should occur prior to issuing a clearing permit. 30 dash 15 dash, that's four.
In fact, now here's the question and all of that. The only good answer we can give you is that when anybody sees a violation of any code or issue in the village, they have to start by reporting. That's not always easy. My neighbor was just beginning recently. I understand how this works. Sometimes there's a hesitation, 7 o'clock in the morning, leaf blowers, three of them on a Saturday. So I understand how this works, but perhaps, perhaps you call the police department and you will either be addressed there or routed, depending on the timeframe, to a code enforcement officer. We have added code enforcement, now we have Keith Partimer and now Bruce Scavoni. So we're, we're getting more stops, we're investigating more complaints. It's, it's just not easier or convenient to do it and we can't make it so.
Yes, because you don't want to disturb that, but I don't know if you've called about your lot.
We're looking into, we're looking into a system that, that goes online, where you can just go to it and address online and report it.
When the hell is the fair cutting? We only have fair cutting Monday to Friday, like.
I would love, no on the weekends. Absolutely, no trees come down on the weekends, absolutely, because that's what's happening and then we have no recourse.
So, yeah.
So they're obviously not violating the code.
Right.
That's the issue, right?
He told me, yes.
There's no one called it.
There's no piece of paper. If you said you have permission, there's no piece of paper on any tree. I looked, I looked carefully, I'm sure you did too.
Yeah. Where's my, well, actually, my daughter, actually, I brought my daughter over and she sat in the car and cried.
Yeah.
And I said.
There was an apple tree on that property.
And I had to tell her that, oh, I knew the trees that were there and a lot of them weren't. They were just what we call swamp maples, which are those maples that just, they snap and they break. Most of those trees, that's what it was. And I tried to explain to her that they're not trees that were, you know.
They're not. I heard it's trees, though.
But I knew that, but if somebody didn't know that, it would look like you took out a large part of vegetation. So, I get it, I get it.
I think what we're all asking is a little more code enforcement, a little more stricter than the code, to go through everything, piece of the code and some kind of.
I think you're going to find in Mrs. Scavoni a very tough, strict enforcer.
So is he willing to put his, his text number or something on a piece of paper that we can?
Well, we have a system. The system was, we work law enforcement through our law enforcement agency. So if you're having difficulty making your report through the police department, particularly on weekends or, I need to know that. But our system is designed to work and I'm not aware of many missed reports.
Well, there was Glover Street, the big ones on Glover Street and that didn't have a permit and Jill.
Was a call made?
I don't know.
I see, that's, that's, that would, that has to be where I have to start to correct the problem. Is if, if we depend on a certain amount of citizen involvement, which we have to, we have a small view on and we have a lot of very responsive citizens, present company particularly. Work the system and if, if you're running into a report you want to make that you can't make for one reason or another, then let me know, let us know.
All right, well, I'll pass that on to our committee who's, you know, very vocal, very upset when these, have things happen on the weekends and can't do it. You know, if they call the police, nothing happens.
Well, I, I called the police in, in springtime for leaf blowing and they did respond to, to a team of professionals on metalwork who were blowing outside them and they responded pretty quickly and stopped. They could continue the rest of the work.
If there's no permit posted on a tree, even the police are not going to necessarily know to go into the files to find out whether Hempstead Street, Sixth and Seventh Street has a permission to do that. I mean, that's just not, so whatever you can do in terms of.
Well, that's what you just described as soluble, which is if there's a call made, the activity's underway, a police officer responds or code enforcement responds. They're unable to do. They're able to determine whether or not there's an existing permit. That's their job. So don't assume that that will work soon.
All right.
And it should work.
I will, I will pass that on.
Or the permit's not posted.
Yeah, there's a requirement, there's a permit.
There is a requirement to.
So if there's no permit posted, then they should shut the work down.
I mean, the protocol.
Yeah, that's what should have happened, really, on your base there.
I mean, I went to work, I came back.
I know, it was all trees were down. They were tiny trees.
It was, they were all gone, so, and I did talk to Ralph, you know, they, I looked at the trees, they were all swamp maples, basically.
Except for that one good one.
I think there was problems with that tree.
All right. But I mean, even on Saturday night, yes, so you're saying the, the system is to call the police.
That's what we got.
Thank you.
If I can make, but hopefully will be the quickest comment tonight, and maybe the last, I don't know, it might slip in front of anybody.
John, it will be the last.
And I meant to make this earlier when you were talking about the, the expansion of the sewer district, and I was sitting back under the air conditioner, and I couldn't hear it.
But you thought you were cool.
And it also drips.
Oh, good.
So that helps to cool you off. But anyway, I couldn't hear it until the time had passed. It's, I mentioned this to, to Liz and to Aiden earlier, expanding the sewer district on Rice Street. We've had a plan for at least two years now with designations of two districts, which are the priorities for sewer, K and L. I think if we're expanding the sewer district at all, it would make sense for K and L to be made into districts. This will help with our funding, because it will show a commitment by the village to sewer those areas.
You mean service areas, not districts?
I'd be service, service, yes. Yes, service, service areas, and it would involve having a public hearing, which would hopefully be, be brief. If any questions come up in the future from those, from the town of East Hampton or the town of South Hampton, you know, have you had a public hearing on this? The answer would be, would be yes, and it's approved.
Yeah.
Because there is some questions that are brought up about the commitment of the, of the village. So making those officially service areas would, would solve that, would solve that question.
It would, yeah, it's, it would, it would absolutely help, and it would, it would just sort of pose some, pose some open looks. We could maybe, could we do something on this for September, because we're also, I'm representing the sewer master plan, so maybe you can have a big sewer night.
If you could introduce. A, a local law to, to amend the code, to, to make those into sewer service areas at the same time.
Yeah.
As Mark Wagner, I mean, it would, that would be a nice time to begin the discussion.
Yeah, I think so. We need a little.
Thank you, John.
To make it no clear cutting on Saturday and Sunday, no cutting.
It's already in there. It's pretty much covered. It does explain space.
It's already.
That's an enforcement.
Yeah.
All righty, again, our congratulations to the, the last man, who's got a different T-shirt on tonight. Thank you, Andy, the last man standing or sitting.
Jim's still here. Good night, all. Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you all, and on the record, I want to say we're going to perfect this electronic system.
Yes.
And the air conditioning.
And getting a room stretched.
We're all right.
We were sitting in front.
See, smart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Salute.
All those in favor. Hi, everyone, hi.